Good evening and welcome to Fort Mill's Town Council Meeting for November the 13th. We're happy to have you. If you have a device that possibly could ring, and I'm gonna go ahead and include watches now, please turn it on silent so that we can give you our attention and hear everything that we need to hear. So please set your devices on silent. With that, we will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and then Councilwoman Cook will give us an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bow.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day that you've brought to us, by the beautiful fall afternoon in Fort Mill. We're so humbled and thankful for the many blessings that you give us. Thank you for getting us through another election season and helping us to realize that the perceptions and the reputations of us do not matter near as much as the character we have on the inside and the life we live for you on the outside. Please be with us tonight as we have guidance for the town and the decisions we need to make, and we do so in your name. Amen.
Amen. Council members, you have received the October 23rd, 2023 council meeting minutes. Do you have any changes, deletions, or additions?
Mayor there on their old business, business item number two, I think the vote issue motions is not approved.
Okay, so noted. Any further corrections, changes? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept with the edit submitted.
I have a motion to approve with the change noted, and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. All right, pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. For those who wish to speak, you must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak, and with the size of the crowd today, I bet we got a few people listed. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll start with Amy, and I'm not great with names. Amy, is it Bulrus? Bulrus? Good, thank, uh huh, please. State your name and your address.
Amy Bulrus, 1930, Sapphire Meadow Drive, 29715.
Thank you.
Um, town council, I thank you for letting me speak tonight. I just came to support your Trailmaster plan. First off, the lovely ladies of Harris Street neighborhoods here are asking for trails to connect their schools, so here to support them in that first and foremost. And secondly, just say how excited I am about the plan. I run around here a lot, and basically everything that I could ever ask for sidewalks is on that plan, so I'm excited about that. Specifically, what I wanted to talk to you about is, as you consider your list of what you're going to do first, I'd really like you to consider your, the children around here in the schools that they have to walk to. I looked at your rankings of your projects, and two of the projects at the top of the list, actually three, one the Harris Street project, which I obviously support, but two other, Fort Mill Bypass, and also Dobie's Bridge Road. Right now, you have so many schools there and so many kids that are on that, and somehow neither of those projects made your top four recommendations. And I understand, like, a lot of the land is not owned by Fort Mill, and there's a lot more work that needs to be done to make those done, but speaking as someone who lives over there, there are pedestrians, there are children, there are cross-country runners running down Dobie's Bridge Road every single day.
I live off of Dobie's, so I see what you're saying.
Absurd to think that we don't have sidewalks, and completely understand wanting to make Tom Hall street sidewalks better, understand the 21 or the Old Nations Ford, those sidewalks are terrible, I've been on them, but really, the fact that the Catabridge High School doesn't connect to River Trail Elementary, you have kids taking buses literally across the street because they can't walk between those two schools. Like, the Nims Village and Art and Mills kids, they can't walk between the two schools, so they have to take a bus across the street. You have marching band students at Banks Trail Middle that march at Catabridge High School, quarter mile, they have to get their parents to come pick them up to take them to Catabridge High School because the sidewalk ends just shy of where the school begins. So, just asking, like, specifically when you start prioritizing those, like, even if it's a little harder, even if it's not gonna make the town quite as pretty of in downtown, we really want our kids to be able to walk to school, and more than that, we want them to do that safely. So, would love to see Harris Street, would love to see a bridge between those two schools, so many people would benefit from that, in both schools, high school and elementary school, and also Dobie's Bridge, literally, just so no one gets hit by a car. That's just a very urgent need for our kids who are running along there and biking to school and walking. We really, really need that. So, thank you for your exhaustive Trailmaster plan. I'm asking you to, you know, you ranked those up on number one, I'm asking you to really consider doing those things first, because definitely needs to be done.
Don't sit down, because first, I would like to thank you for coming to say something kind. We generally just hear the other side of it. So, that's a good thing, that's a good start. Second, I know we've made tremendous progress in asking that the schools add sidewalks. We didn't do that previously, we do now. The connectivity among those sidewalks, because the schools are coming up fast, isn't there yet, and we're working on that. You did bring up a very important point. We don't always own the land that that sidewalk needs to go on, and I've spoken with a couple of people about Dobie's because I live off of Dobie's, and it does concern me. But when you go property to property on a GIS search, you're gonna find that, A, there's not any access area to put on one side or the other without getting into private property, so you gotta get an egress. We don't own, it goes county-city, county-city, it's ridiculous. So, it's not as if it hasn't been looked at, it's not as if it won't happen at some point, but I do think there are areas that we can put them around the schools that are gonna be much easier to accommodate prior to Dobie's. I don't like that we don't have a sidewalk on Dobie's, but it is something that is a lot harder than it appears.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, anything you can do to get the bull rolling for my third grader when she goes to high school, that would be great. And, yeah, if that, you know, I know you need a bridge between both the elementary and the high school, whatever's there, that would be awesome. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, Teresa Sword. Okay, I've got a question. I've got Teresa, Tyler House, and Glenn House all at the same address. Are y'all gonna cover the same thing, or are you gonna cover?
We are all talking briefly about the same topic, yes.
All right.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
All right. Teresa Sword, 1995, Hair Road, and thank you so much for the opportunity to address tonight. I just put down a few words. We all know that development in this area is happening at a really rapid pace. Year after year, Fort Mill continues to make the top lists of fastest-growing cities, towns in South Carolina. And I want to thank each one of you, especially during the campaigns that you've run recently, for helping, your commitments to helping manage that growth and the impact that it has on the whole area. So, I have a couple concerns that I wanted to share, though. So, specifically about the crossroads development and the Epps property, my most serious concern is about the, or twofold. One, that the developer has indicated that they plan on draining the pond that is up on the, excuse me, on the Epps Pond property and replacing it with a much smaller stormwater pond. And as you may know, there's a big difference between a stormwater pond and a natural pond, and we're talking about not only the quantity of water that comes through there, but the quality of it as well. So, I'm an environmental engineer, so looking at that, my concern is that you're gonna be getting all of the things from the vehicles, your greases, oils, all that, coming down in through there. And downstream of that pond that's on that property, you've got nationally-listed wetlands and ponds down the entire way. So, I'm asking you to take a close look at that as you go ahead and make decisions about what's allowed in that area, because I do think it has a big impact on that entire region. The other part is that even though the development is being tagged as an age-restricted community, we've seen a grocery store and restaurants and other items put on the plans for that, and obviously, that's gonna add a large number of people coming and going in that, in that area. We already see a lot of traffic on Dobie's Bridge and the, obviously, the bypass in that area. So, as that traffic study gets done and completed, I urge you to take a very close look at it and pay attention to whether this is the right intensity for the type of development that happens in that particular area. So, as the neighbors of that development, we understand that there's lots of pressure being implied on you to, all over the town, for additional development, but we're asking that you also take a look at what's appropriate for that area, and keep in mind the reasons that people love Fort Mill already, and keep that in mind as when we decide what, what to do with those areas.
Okay. I'd like to thank you. You're one of the few people that has stood up and said, "As you decide." So many people will read or hear and assume that we've made a decision, but we're required to hear out everything, and it has changed. It's changed like this, so we've not made a decision. So, I appreciate you bringing your input in such a good way. I took notes, as I'm sure all my teammates did, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tyler House, from the same address. Hi.
All right, this is the second time I've stood up here actually and spoken with you guys. I'll apologize for how I'm dressed, too, but I had spoken with my dad a little bit about some of the plans that you guys had had for the area behind our house, and I wanted to go ahead and utilize that three minutes if I was allowed that. So, my name is Tyler House, and I was born in Fort Mill 22 years ago. Growing up here, I really appreciated the small-town aspect of everything, and I actually vividly remember my younger sister and I complaining to our parents about the fact that we would have to go to Indianland or Rock Hill to go to the good restaurants. Goodness, I already lost my place, okay. At the time, my parents stated that Fort Mill was predominantly meant to be a residential town and had certain limits on what was to be built in the area. I'm not planning on getting emotional and becoming angry at you for simply doing your jobs. However, as you've all gained your current positions from being elected by the residents in Fort Mill, I believe it is your duty to protect our best interests. They gave you their vote, and I'm simply asking for you to uphold the standards of this town. Every time the people I graduated high school with and I come home, I actually attend Clemson, I'll be going back there tonight, it's a common theme across the board that everything looks different. I've actually gotten lost a time or do, a time or two due to the new cut-throughs or buildings that, it seemed to me, have just been thrown up overnight, and I don't recognize anything. Sadly, I can't and I won't call this town home anymore because it's not where I grew up. Where I grew up, it took 15 minutes to get to school, not 45 while waiting at stoplight after stoplight. The traffic is exponentially terrible, the places I made memories at have since been long gone for new developments, and frankly, my family is just really tired. If my family and I wanted to live in Charlotte, we would have built our family home there, but we didn't. We moved to Fort Mill for a reason. Frankly, it's infuriating to watch my dad potentially mourn the loss of our dream home we moved into in 2012, including the pond I watched him dig by hand in the gazebo my little sister and I helped him build. This is my second time standing in the same spot begging to preserve the town I've grown up in, the first time being when discussions of building this Goddard School were brought up. Of course, our pleas were shut down, and frankly, it's very difficult to be able to stand here and not feel completely discouraged. I'm sad, and I hope you make the right decision if you really do care about the morals of Fort Mill and keeping and maintaining that small-town aspect, and I just wanted to thank you all again for letting me speak.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Glenn House.
Glenn House, 1995, Hair Road, and I did not know what they were gonna say. I, I don't have anything to say. I guess I got nothing to say. No, I do appreciate you guys. What I was going to speak about, I think, I think was expressed by them, and I do want to read one correspondence to the mayor's point earlier about when decisions are made. I've received over 100 correspondences from different people on this topic. Your signing list probably reflects so many, more fewer than that because of, I think is reflected in one of the comments that I got. It's from Scott L. in Fort Mill, and he posted on Facebook, and it was after I explained a little bit about what, what the crossroads development was, was back on the board, and he said, "Honest question. Will it do any good to comment at the reading? Everyone who lives in Fort Mill area is tired of the number of houses and apartments going in, but it never stops. York County, Fort Mill, Tega K., whoever's in charge just greenlights every new project." And my response to him was, of course, that it was a great question, and I, and I went through a lot of the differences between the first go-around and, and some of the, the ways that that went about and, and where we stand today. Some of the new faces on council, I've met some of you, I've communicated with some of you, and I genuinely, genuinely get a very, very good feeling that you do indeed want what is best for, for this town moving forward. A lot of you campaigned on responsible and limited growth and things like that, and I genuinely believe that, that you guys want to see that happen. And so, in summary, after I went through the explanation, I just said, "So, to answer your question, I do believe that we can make a difference. The more members of our community who choose to speak up and share their feelings, the better chance our town council hears the voices they were elected to represent. Hope to see you on the 13th." And, as I said, I've got over 100 correspondences from people who genuinely have a bit of a sense of helplessness because they don't feel like that their voices are gonna be heard. I hope that in the next couple of weeks, or however long this thing goes, that they'll change their minds and realize, as the mayor said, that you guys, that is liquid-fluid situation. I've dealt with developers for 30-some-odd years in my, in my career, and I know where you stand right now may seem, from your perspective, to be, this is kind of in a bad place, but guess what's gonna happen? That developer's gonna say, "Okay, they've reached their point of mass density, they're gonna now, we're gonna now squeeze, we're gonna give them something back. We're gonna give them something back that we've already taken, which we've, you know, which we've already asked for, and we're gonna give them a little bit back," to make you guys think that they're conceding something. And in reality, they're not. They're gonna go back across the border with the money, and they're not gonna have to deal with any of the after-effects that you and your neighbors, your congregations at church, and, and your friends, and, and all of us are gonna have to, have to deal with. So, thank you so much for your time.
Glenn, thank you for, again, recognizing exactly what we struggle with, is that because we entertain, by law, we need to, doesn't mean that's how we vote. There are also many times, and I speak to all of you, that we will say no before it ever comes to this bench. We have said no to development multiple times, multiple times, because it wasn't going to fit. And I don't remember a time in the recent past that we've said yes to an apartment. We really don't.
The last department we lived, Greens.
Yeah, the Greens. So, we, it comes across differently sometimes than it really is, and I appreciate your patience with this, 'cause I know you've reached out to a number of folks I sit with here, and I appreciate your patience with us as we work through this.
Absolutely. I have all the confidence in the world. I think you guys are going to and continue to.
While we got this open, Mayor says, the, yeah, we grew up here, I fished on that lake, actually, I lost a lure, if you find it, it's probably mine.
I got a couple, yeah.
But, the, a lot of the growth in Fort Mill is not within the city limits. The city limits is hits and misses. So, as passionate as you are about the town of Fort Mill, I'd like for you to be as passionate about the township of Fort Mill and reach out to our county counterparts.
Yes.
Every time I ride down some road that used to cut through to get rid of traffic, there's apartments, and those are in the county. They, and I have nothing against people living in apartments, but, but, you know, it's the same road, they use the same roads, they go to the same schools, use the same resources and stuff, and we have no oversight on that, but yet, it impacts us, and people think, since they have a Fort Mill address, it's these seven bad guys up here. And I can, I can definitely say that we try to do what is best for the town and the residents, you know. I already have my cemetery lot, and I use this a lot. I'm not going anywhere. And I've born and raised here, and this, that, and the other, so, but, you know, people have the right to sell their property, and zoning kinda gives some guidelines what we can and can't do, but whatever we do, I can guarantee you, what we think is the best for the community, or the best deal we can do, or whatever. So, it's not something we take politely whatsoever, and I've talked way more than I intend to, I'm sorry.
Thank you kindly, thank you kindly.
I can say, I appreciate the intelligent dialogue, too. That's, that to me has value. I mean, even as we walk through day-to-day life, if somebody comes up to you and just like, ah, you know, hits you right between the eyes with just an off-the-cuff opinion or rant or rave or whatever, it's not gonna really set you, you kinda glaze over. But I think the approach has been, you know, you've done your homework, you and your wife and your family and all, and a lot of people in here have really done their homework and, you know, can come with intelligent dialogue, and I'm, that, that goes a long way with me.
I grew up on a farm in Georgia. I've got 33 acres in my name that was, that was divided amongst all of our, the kids and grandkids. I could've gone back there years ago. I managed the state of Georgia for a water and wastewater treatment company and, and go there every week. I go on Tuesday mornings, I come back on Thursday nights, for the most part. I haven't gone back because when I was 24 years old in 1992, when I moved here, I found a home here, I found something here that I could make into a little microcosm of what I had and show that to my girls and everything else. I don't wanna leave. I, I built the house in 2012 that I wanted, that I wanna pass in, and I, Lisa and I were talking about it not being in the, in the city, in the county. There's, there's reasons specifically why mine, being in the county, that, that it doesn't work for me to come into the city, but I would have no issue whatsoever if there was some type of a, of a region where the people that were in the county, because it's such a convoluted area, the people that were in the county could contribute to the town, the town's resources that we use, because I love all the events at the Walton Park and all the things that, at the Walter K. Elijah, and all the things that go on the Greenway, I'm there all the time, all the, all the things that we have that are the town of Fort Mill, and yet, you know, here, I'm this county guy. So, I understand completely, and I hope that that'll be going in that direction at some point.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Chelsea Beauchamp? Did I, did I just really do that? Oh, I did, okay, you're all right. And Eliza?
Yeah, I can say this is gonna come out, too.
Welcome, Eliza.
So, we live 3425 Roland Avenue, which is not in the town of Fort Mill.
Nope.
We know we're right across, but he was gonna start.
So, my name's Elijah Beauchamp. I'm a student at Fort Mill High School, and I live, like, less than a mile and a half away, and would love to be able to walk, be good exercise, good outside time, and also convenient when I wouldn't be able to get picked up. However, there is not currently adequate sidewalks for that.
So, we have been, and thank you to Amy, who was kinda speaking about this earlier. We live so close to Fort Mill High School, would love to be able to attend there. As a parent, I would love to see it. As a community member, I would love to have access, and it would continue connecting us to Harris Street Park and the connectivity, and then also, as a driver, I'm very concerned about all the pedestrians coming out of the high school crossing Harris Street, and so I just know that it's like an accident waiting to happen. So, Harris Street is within the town of Fort Mill, and so I would like for you to consider putting sidewalks in along Harris Street, particularly from Fort Mill High School up to Sam Smith.
Have you come to RFATs?
Yes.
I remember your face.
Yeah.
We're meeting again this Friday, and I will make certain that we talk again about the sidewalks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Give her a medal for going to RFATs.
I mean, I told you I remember her face.
Go to the dentist, go to RFATs, I mean.
Yes.
You think this is exciting?
And Eliza, thank you for having the courage to stand up and speak.
Thank you for coming.
We'll vote for you in about 10 years.
Yes.
I'd like to follow up on the sidewalks, and I think we've done it several times, we have a nice group. My neighborhood does not have sidewalks, and your neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks, and they never will, 'cause they weren't designed in the beginning. But new planning restrictions now require sidewalks on at least one side of the street in a neighborhood and all public road access. So, that's where you see sidewalks that go nowhere. Me and Mr. Hudson's fought tooth and nail to get those in, so all new development have sidewalks. And it's gonna take, for the next 20 years, eventually, they'll start hooking together, but you have to start somewhere. And everybody wants to say, "We've got sidewalks, but you don't have sidewalks," and they go nowhere. Well, it's because the code rolled out and new developments will have it. So, eventually, they'll start connecting, and that's where we are right now. But it's really hard. People say, "I want a sidewalk," and I'm like, "Okay, you'll give us 20-foot of your front yard?" You're like, "No." Well, where's it gonna go? So, it's really hard to retrofit, and then there's state roads, and there's county roads, and, but, but we have made great progress in the code, so it, so we're starting to make that turn. Now, it's just trying to tie them all together. So, I just wanna kinda clarify that, because...
We agree with you.
Yeah.
And thank you, you know, thank you.
We're doing all we can, but I can't go take, you know, somebody's property because we need to, and that's what the Trailmaster plan is, so we make sure that new development's going in, that we have a right-of-way between this piece of private, so we can connect it at some point in time. We don't know when that'll be, but we're trying to make plans. We're being very strategic in planning that, but you can't do it all at one time, as much as we would like to.
I do have a question, because my kids at the time are not at Fort Mill, although I went there, and he did, and he did. When you're trying to cross from the school over Harris Street, is there a crossing guard? Is there a crossing walk area? Are you doing it at traffic lights? Can you give me a little bit of a visual?
So, currently, there is nothing to cross, but we actually are, are asking, we don't need to cross Harris Street where we live.
They're on the same side.
So, we're on, so if you, there is a little bit of a sidewalk from where Harris Street meets, oh, I always, is it 21 or 160? I always get 21, thank you. There's a little bit of a sidewalk along that stretch. If you were to continue it up, Sutton Mills neighborhood that was built after the code, so it has the sidewalk that goes to nowhere, you could connect there, and then we are hoping with RFATs' help to also get a sidewalk up Sam Smith Road, and that would connect Sutton Place, it would connect Wimbledon Woods, so they could walk, and actually, there are sidewalks inside Sutton Place, and it would essentially connect to Baxter. And so, it would, you know, obviously, people over there probably aren't gonna be walking to high school, but just as a connectivity standpoint, and then you could cross the street, it goes in front of Walden Park, it connects to Harris Street Park.
I was just more concerned about schools specifically, and if there is something that we should address with the school board about the safety of trying to cross when you're going to or leaving school, because if they can help in this situation, providing, while they can't build the sidewalks either, if they can provide a crossing guard during the busy times, then that's something that's worth addressing and asking them for, since that's their part.
There's a sidewalk to the old Fort Mill Elementary School, and then it's, then that driveway from there to Munn Road, there's not, which, and then it's from there down to, well, it goes through the VFW, then the garage and all that stuff, and...
There are a number of students, this wouldn't help us, but there are a number of students just walking right across Harris Road, walking along Harris Road to Jones Branch and to the other ones on the other side. So, I don't know, we, we have considered, we've been working with Liz Duda, and we've considered talking to the school board and seeing if there is something like that they could do, but essentially, you do have people walking not just across the street, but also along the road, and, and it's hard to do that safely.
All right, thank you.
You might wanna single out Tom Odette, he's your county council member, and he is in charge of monies that are spent in that area. So, we certainly will be supportive and encourage all the right things to happen, and appreciate your coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Laura Keely? Keedy? Keedy with a D.
Hi, thank you. So, thank you for your time. I'm also in Chelsea's neighborhood, and I'm here to ask for prioritization of the Harris Street project. More from a public safety standpoint, I do see kids coming to school, but it's a very narrow road, Harris Street, when you come off of Sam Smith, you make a left, you can go down to Munn, or you can go to 21, so the high school's between 21 and Munn. I also have children, but I don't think that, I think my kids will be driving by the time the sidewalk gets put in. Chelsea has a few younger kids than I do. My son would've loved to ride his bike to school, but I know it's not gonna happen. It, there are times from a public safety standpoint, so I worked on Munn Road for years, I just recently left that job, but, I mean, eight years I was there, just driving around the corner. I literally saw a person in the street and had to swerve out of the way, because I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, that's a person, like, he's in the road. There's nowhere to walk." There is, like, when you come under the underpass, you can get onto the sides of the road, but then the grass kind of is like ramped, and, you know, it's got that ditch where the water goes, so like, if you're gonna fall into the ditch, or you're gonna walk in the street. So, it's, it's more of a public safety issue, and there are tons of kids, I see them all the time, coming from Jones Branch, and our neighborhood. So, like, if the bus can't come, I actually saw Elijah walking one day, or my son is friends with Elijah as well. What, and, um, our neighborhood, so like if the bus can't come, I actually saw Elijah walking one day, or, or my son is friends with Elijah as well. And, um, when Chelsea mentioned that she was gonna come out here to ask for this, I said, I'm, I'm definitely with you. Um, I saw him walking, you know, trying to stay out of that ditch and, but off the road too. So, and it was basically because the, I think there was a bus problem that day. So, um, I stay home until my, I drive my kid and, but sometimes people can't. They have to go to work and children have to walk if the bus doesn't show up, um, because every kid wants to go to school. So that's all. I just wanted to thank you for your time and see what you can do to priori- prioritize that project.
And again, I would offer to all of you that do not live in the Fort Mill town limits to contact Tom Odette.
Okay.
Because he's the person that is your representative.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we always appreciate to hear from folks, especially when they're being congenial and offering good information for us to consider, so thank you. I'm gonna ask council if we can make a small change. Uh, I would like to go directly from public comment to new business. Do you have any issues with that?
No, it'll be fine.
Okay. Uh, actually, we can just dismiss old businesses, we do not have any old business items. So we're going to launch into new business and I'm sorry for staff for keeping you, but I appreciate your, uh, allowing us to do this in the proper way. Thank you. So new business item number one, first reading of an ordinance further amending ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-two so as to change the effective date for the rezoning of York County tax map numbers, guys, this is my favorite part, zero-two-zero-one-seven-zero-one-zero-six-four and zero-two-zero-one-seven-zero-one-zero-six-five from PND Planned Neighborhood Development to MXU Mixed Use Development. Penelope, you are a subject matter expert.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Um, the applicant has asked for a fourth amendment to change the requirement um, to extend the, the deadline of, um, buying, purchasing the properties that are part of the crossroads. Um, the current deadline was, um, November thirtieth. They would like to extend the deadline to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And so tonight there are three ordinances, this one's the first one for the annexation and then there's, the second one is rezoning and the third one is the development agreement. And this is from the original, um, approval of the crossroads from twenty-twenty-one where there was a stipulation that they would have to close on the property by November thirtieth. They are now asking for an extension again.
So Penelope, I think I speak for most up here, we've extended a, a multiple amount of time um, because there was information that needed to be gathered. And I, um, you know, certainly wait for a motion and see how this council votes. But I can't stress enough that our voting for an extension does not indicate an up or down for that particular development. Do I, do I make myself really clear?
Yes.
Yes.
We are, my, my understanding, we're waiting on the final traffic studies.
That is correct.
TIA's and the.
We actually see real, uh, the real metrics so we can have all the information before us, before we make a.
And so I noticed some of the familiar faces here tonight from the planning commission meeting, when we did go to the planning commission meeting in October, they made a recommendation, um, and, you know, I did state that it would be going to council tonight. However, because, um, council and the mayor instructed staff, because the TIA was not completed and approved, they would not be listening to the actual amendment of those, um, new properties tonight. So, um, from that stance that we got that new information, um, we did get a draft copy of the TIA, but it's being reviewed by SCDOT, York County and town staff. And so that is a thirty business days, um, they have to actually comment before we can up, basically approve the TIA. So it looks like it could be January twenty-twenty-four before the amendment of the Epps Farm piece of property and the Williams Road comes back to council.
And again, overall, you know, I think I'm gonna say what you're gonna say.
I think so.
An extension is not an acceptance.
And it's also due diligence. We're being very thorough and, and there again, let's you all know that we're, you know, we're not rushing through anything. We're trying to do best, best for all, all parties, so.
Does planning commission put that through with the caveat of, since the TIA, to your point, wasn't in place, that they were basically saying send it to, to council with knowing that that was still gonna need to be reviewed.
That is correct.
All right, um, hearing that, uh, does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, as due business item number one.
I have a motion to approve new business item one as an extension. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. New business item number two, Penelope, you might as well hang tight. Um, first reading of an ordinance further amending ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-four so as to change the effective date of the ordinance authorizing the entry by the town of Fort Mill into a development agreement with Crossroads Development Partners LLC, a North Carolina limited liability company, J. Max Henson LLC, Max Henson Jr., J. Max Henson III, Marshall Odell Henson, J. Max Henson Jr. as custodian for Adam Jason Henson, Raymond Leesar and Christie Leesar, Lynell Simmons Bailey, Judith Alicia Kimbrel, James Wayne Lancaster, Ronald Allen Vogel, John W. May Senior, Brenda B. Tyson and Ronald H. Bailey, Christopher Robert Blanton, Bonnie James Blanton and Kenneth Wayne Blanton and Thomas G. Hare for properties located at York County tax map numbers zero-two-zero-seventeen-zero-one-zero-six-four-zero-six-five, also seven-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-five-nine, portion of seven-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine-four, and seven-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-six and authorizing execution and delivery of an amended agreement. Penelope, first reading.
Um, same issue, um, this is the original, um, development agreement that was approved in twenty-twenty-one and this is again another ordinance asking for a time extension to move it from November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three to January thirty-first, um, twenty-twenty-four.
Any further discussion?
And for clarification on that amendment, um, and the development agreement that we're talking about here. Specifically, we're not agreeing to what the property is going to look like just to be in a conversation um, and start whatever, um, mitigation needs to happen and what recommendations there are from planning.
Actually, for this particular ordinance is just changing the date that was originally approved in twenty-twenty-one, that the ordinance would not be in effect until the applicant purchased the property from those individuals. And so that was the original twenty-twenty-one, that the date that you would have to, um, you know, purchase the, those properties from those individual, close on it before November thirtieth. So the only thing that we're changing here tonight is the time extension of having the current applicant purchase the property from the current property owners.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. All right, um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number two.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
New business item number three, first reading of an ordinance further amending ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-five so as to change the effective date for the annexation of York County tax map numbers, a portion of seven-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine-four, and seven-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-six containing approximately thirty-six point seven one plus or minus acres located on Fort Mill Parkway and off Hair Road. Penelope.
Again, this was part of the original twenty-twenty-one that was approved. These were the three parcels that were in the county that were annexed contingent that the property owner, excuse me, contingent that the applicant would purchase those properties from the owners by November thirtieth. They are now asking for the time extension to change from November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. Any questions on the third item? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number three.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve new business item number three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right. So just to be consistent with this, thank you, Penelope. We'll move forward with committee reports. Uh, committee report number one is an ad hoc appointments advisory committee. Councilman Helm sits at the helm of this, um, committee and, uh, I think you're prepared to make a recommendation to council.
On November the second, twenty-twenty-three, the ad hoc appointments advisory committee met and review applications for the associate judge position. Committee discussed and applications and received and recommended direct staff to offer the position to Tyler Tracer Anderson for a two-year appointment.
Does council have any questions in regards to the ad hoc committee's recommendation for the hiring of the part-time judge?
Just for clarification, that's, um, one of the candidates we discussed previously. I thought it was an executive session, but may have been, nah.
That's not something we would discuss here.
Thank you.
Um, we do as an ad hoc committee, uh, look at all applications that come to us, marry them up with the criteria by which, um, folks have, um, looked for. We get comments from the hiring personnel and we make a recommendation that we feel is the best fit. So, um, thank you, um, Councilman Helms for that. Uh, I'll need a vote from council on, let me see this person's name again, for the appointment of Tylee Tracer Anderson, which is a two-year appointment.
Or what was the position again?
Associate judge.
Associate judge, mhm. So I'll need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. Now, we'll go back to page one. Let's start with presentations. Presentation number one, employee of the quarter, Chris Pettit.
It's just wonderful to get you to have to zoom through all that, isn't it? Sorry. Not sorry.
All right, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be here today, uh, to announce and congratulate John Kujaawa as the town's employee of the quarter. Uh, John works in the utilities department as a meter technician. John received multiple nominations from his peers, so I won't read them in their entirety, but I will pick out a few sections to quote. John is one of the most dedicated town employees I know. John is the first to volunteer for anything. Uh, John stays late to make sure the job is done and done well. It is said that John doesn't believe in good customer service, but rather his goal is excellent customer service.
Excellent.
And when John is on call after hours, no matter the hour, John approaches his position with excellent customer service and we often get calls commending him for the service he provides for our customers at any hour of the day. Uh, Mayor and Council, these items I've listed here are the definition of a fantastic employee and that is why it's my privilege to, uh, announce John Kujaawa as our employee of the quarter.
Thank you, John.
John, congratulations.
We appreciate you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. That's outstanding. I really appreciate what you do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you do for all of us.
Thank you.
All right, all right, guys. So, presentation number two requires a little work. There once was a goat named Brown, who batted more than any around. His work is so good, his heart so big, his whistle so loud. We are proud of the best brown goat, now all around. What we wanted to do was to recognize that, uh, amongst us, we have an employee by the name and friend of Brown Simpson. His voice has been heard on OTS stations on Friday nights during the fall for nearly two decades. And he has been honored as the lone inductee in the thirteenth class, thirteen, couldn't they jump over that? Of the OTS Sports Wall of Fame. Simpson was elected by a twenty-two member panel made up of veteran OTS sportscasters and retired Wall of Fame members. The Rock Hill native is a graduate of Rock Hill High, earned a degree in sports management at Winthrop University in eighty-eight. Oh man, it goes into your youth. As a youth, you enjoyed playing softball, basketball, ran cross country while in high school and at the age of sixteen earned his Eagle Scout Award. So I can't, uh, began to thank you enough for the old brown goat that you are. And that is all capitals G-O-A-T. And we would like to honor you this evening and, uh, tell you how very proud of you we are.
Great job.
I just, I want to say this before I put this hat on, um.
Mess up your hair.
I know. It, um, it truly is a pleasure, number one, to work for the town of Fort Mill and I've been blessed for the last almost twenty years now being here. Second of all, to have the opportunity to work high school football games on the radio on Friday night. And I've had that opportunity the last seventeen years for a radio station that cares about the community and they care about York County. And WRHI, I can't say enough of good things about them and, uh, they're, uh, two managing partners, Manning Kimmel and Alan Miller. Uh, but it's been a blessing and, uh, it's been an honor and I've been overwhelmed with just so many people reaching out to me for this honor. But Mayor, thank you, thank you, council.
Nobody else gave you a hat, the brown goat. It's wonderful. We're so proud. I couldn't get a real goat, Brown.
You're prohibited in campus, the town staff, can't bring goats into town.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Amen.
Good job, man.
Wear this hat.
I'm wearing mine in the Christmas parade.
All right, thanks for allowing us to have a little bit of fun, but you know it's from our heart and we love you. So proud of you. All right, presentation number three, twenty-two-four town of Fort Mill holiday events, it's that time. We all get excited. Jakana, thank you so much.
It's actually twenty-two-three, but.
What did I say, four? I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
It was wrong on there.
Yeah, it just fell off the circulation.
No, I have twenty-two-four, yeah. Um, so yes, I am here to present the remainder of the events for twenty-two-three. And, um, that first picture there is a, a picture from the Fort Mill Christmas Village and lighting of the tree last year.
It's a great picture.
Always just a fun and beautiful event. Um, this year's event will be held on, um, Thursday, November the thirtieth from eight, five to eight PM and that will be at the Fort Mill Amphitheater in Walter Elijah Park at three forty-five North White Street. From five to eight PM, you will be able to enjoy food and drinks and shopping with our vendors. Um, you will also, um, be able to enjoy our trackless trains. We have roving entertainment and kids activities. From five twenty-five to six PM on the amphitheater stage, we have the Fort Mill Baptist Church Handbell Choir and Abode Dance Academy. And then from six to six-thirty, we will have our tree lighting ceremony and Santa's arrival. And then following that, we have all six of our local elementary schools, um, that will be performing. Fort Mill Elementary School, Dobie's Bridge, Sugar Creek, River Trail, Teeka Kay and Riverview. And then also, um, we have several dance, um, groups that will be performing. And then also um, we have several dance um groups that will be performing, Kelly's School of Dance, Miller Street, and Just Be Dance Academy. And then also during that time, you can visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus. Um, they will be down near the amphitheater stage. And Piedmont Medical Center, Fort Mill, they are hosting our Santa's Workshop, and they will have a kids' craft area um located near the um the children's playground in the park. We have fun roving entertainment. We have um lighted starflakes that will be, I mean, snowflakes um that will be roving around. We have baby reindeer, so you don't want to miss that. And then we have um a giant uh gingerbread and reindeer and polar bear and toy soldier. And then the town also is adding these photo backdrops to the park this year. These are just some fun pictures from last year's event of the children dancing and singing, and the handbell choir and our trains. And uh during the evening, all the food trucks will be located on the right-hand side of the park. Um, we actually have a fire truck that um will make it snow in that area. Um, and then we have our trains that are located on Audrey Street. Um, our beautiful tree that is already up is in um the middle of the park. And then, of course, on the a- the amphitheater stage is where all our entertainment will be, and Piedmont Medical Center, Fort Mill, will be right there in front of the playground. And then we have lots of hot chocolate and coffee uh spread around the park this year. And this is our wonderful Public Works Department putting up all of our town decorations. We love them. They do an excellent job. So what to bring? Please bring chairs and a blank, chairs or blankets to sit on. No coolers, no outside food. We have many food vendors for you to choose from. No outside drinks, um because we do have all that coffee and hot chocolate and so much more out there. No golf carts. Please park those in designated parking areas. No bicycles, and only service animals are allowed. No smoking or vaping, no profanity, and no firearms or weapons in the park. Parking is available at Calhoun Street Park at two oh three Calhoun Street, Looms Way Veterans Park at one oh six North White Street, and then we have handicap parking behind the amphitheater. And please do not park along the roadways. And that event leads us to our seventy-sixth Annual Fort Mill Christmas Parade. That will happen just a couple of days later on December the second at eleven A.M. This year's grand marshal for the seventy-sixth Annual Parade is Ms. Trudy Boland Heemsoft. Ms. Trudy ha- uh she was a Fort Mill Town Council member, and she has been a part of many organizations around York County for many years. She has built a life of service to our community, and we will be posting more information about all of her service to our county um on our social media. And our parade route, the parade begins at Tom Hall in Unity and travels through Main Street and historic downtown Fort Mill and North White Street, and then it exits at Walter Elijah Park. And we have several street closures during that event. The primary ones are Tom Hall from Still to Springs, Main Street from Tom Hall to White, North White Street from Main to Old Nation Road. And then some secondary street closures are Grace Street, Tom Hall to Allison, Forest from Tom Hall to Pfeiffer, Monroe White from Tom Hall to Confederate, and Confederate um from Main Street to Monroe. Spring Street from North White to Park, Claiborne from North White to Park, Massey from North White to Sprat. And those are approximately ten thirty A.M. to one P.M. Um, and at four A.M. that morning, um we will cone off Main Street for the parade. Um, we have all of our staff and everyone that's going to be arriving very early that morning, and our parade entries um will begin arriving at nine A.M. till ten fifteen A.M. And then, of course, our parade begins at eleven A.M. And then that leads us to the next weekend, where we are bringing back our beloved Fort Mill Christmas Cookie Crawl on Saturday, December the night, from ten A.M. to two P.M. Registration is required, and there is a limited number of participants. And that registration goes live on Wednesday morning at nine A.M. until it is full. And you will um register by visiting fortmillsc.gov under the Communication and Events Department. This is photos from the last year that we were able to do it. In twenty twenty-one, during the pandemic, well, was, pandemic was a little over, but a few kids there with masks on. But we um are happy to bring it back this year. So how it works is a hundred and fifty families will, will receive one cookie tin, and will visit nine different downtown area businesses um through the downtown corridor. It stretches from the peach stand um all the way to the YMCA at the complex. And along the route, some of our businesses actually offer fun activities for the participants. Um, and again, registration will begin on Wednesday at nine A.M. And uh everyone that um that does get to be a part of it, they will, will receive an email prior to the event, and it gives them instructions on where and when to pick up their tin and a route map. And then the last event um we are doing um is, right now, we have um our community outreach project that's benefiting the Fort Mill Care Center. Um, in honor of the town's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, we are inviting the public to join us in this project to benefit the Fort Mill Care Center. We are collecting several items to benefit them, including shampoo, deodorant, lotion, body wash, wipes, toilet paper, dishes, dish soap, disinfecting wipes, all-purpose cleaner, and paper towels. Um, and the public can drop these off at the Fort Mill Town Hall Lobby, two hundred Tom Hall Street, Monday through Friday, now through November the thirtieth. Um, and we are open eight thirty A.M. to five P.M. So to help honor the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, the town wanted to make an impact in the community by supporting a local charity, and the town decided to partner with the Fort Mill Care Center to help them restock some much-needed supplies that they run out of this time of the year. And um we consulted with them, and these were the items that they needed. Um, the care center manages the many requests for family aid from members of the Fort Mill community, and their major emphasis is helping families who find themselves in need of basic necessities. But please note that they, they will still be hosting their annual Thanksgiving Mill Food Drive. So of course, we still want people to contribute to that as well. And you can find out more about that project with them at fortmillcarecenter.org. But to find out the details about our project, just visit fortmillsc.gov forward slash fortmillonefifty. And of course, for all Town of Fort Mill information, please visit our town website, fortmillsc.gov, and follow Town of Fort Mill on Facebook, Instagram, and X. That is all I have.
A lot of work, Jocana, and this is the time of the year that we all love. So we appreciate everything that you give to us through your service to the town. Council, do you have questions or comments?
I was going to say something that um, the other day I was coming home for lunch, and they were putting the, putting the Christmas tree together. So I stopped by there and just was uh talking with the guys who were putting it together, and it was lunchtime. And the, you know, they were asking for volunteers to stay to continue to put it together. No one wanted to leave because everybody there wanted to make sure that tree was perfect. From the, from the, the panels that go on to the ornaments to everything else. The, the, the dedication that the staff put into putting that together, it was, it was impressive to watch. So there's a lot of time and effort that goes into that. So. Throw that in there.
I'd like to say and to hinge on that because we had a beautiful Veterans Day service, even though it rained and it was chilly. When you look at the amount of work that you, Chris, Brown, our utilities and public works folks get out there no matter what, set up tents, chairs, audio equipment, Tony, I know you can hear me, um, video equipment. It's incredible, and when I see the photos of last year's, I know why it's worth it. But um to Alan's point, there's such care given in changing out our banners and our flags and keeping our town clean and putting up the beautiful lights for Christmas. If you haven't been to our parade, you need to. It is uh, it is a heartwarming event, and I thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that's a great way to count a perfect year. Y'all done the events team, and don't forget the police officers will be out there four o'clock in the morning starting off.
But that is not me.
It's uh, it's amazing how much work is put into this, but I think uh, uh, the event, the, the events this year have just been outstanding. It's exciting to see them starting to decorate and see the trees up at the bottom of Main Street. It's one of those at Elijah Park, and there, the guys are out there having a blast out there decorating the trees.
So they're, they're putting lights on as we were driving in today, so, yeah, on Main Street.
Good, good job. Thank, thanks to everybody, your staff, and every, I mean, it's a, it's a very wide and deep amount of resources get, uh, that, but it's well worth it.
Yes, yeah, every town department is involved.
Just ask an eight-year-old kid, and you'll know that that's well worth it.
I like it, and I'm way older than eight. I am. I'm in middle school. That's right. Thank you, Jocana. We appreciate everything, and thank you to all our departments, police, fire, public works, recreation, e- every department gives somehow to these events to make it happen. Thank you so much. Presentation number four, recognition of town staff receipt of awards from the Municipal Insurance and Risk Financing Fund and the American Institute of Architects, Chris Pettit. Nope, uh, that, you're not Chris. Hi, Eric.
Uh, okay. Uh, thank you, mayor and council, and I was um, I'm going to ask Becky and Kathy to come stand up here with me, so y'all can get on TV as well. Uh, like to just first acknowledge that I understand it's a challenge following, following a presentation uh about the holiday festivities with, with a little presentation here about insurance. So uh, I'll try to do my best here. Uh, through the municipal association, and I've got some acronyms here to throw at you, the South Carolina Municipal Insurance Trust, or SMIT, uh, and the South Carolina Municipal Insurance and Risk Financing Fund, SMRF, uh, held their Risk Management Services, RMS, annual meeting last week uh on November ninth in Columbia. Uh, SMIT provides workers comp, workers compensation coverage to its member cities, while SMRF uh provides property and casualty coverage for its members. The annual RMS awards recognize those members who reduce their total cost and keep employees safe. Risk Management Services determined the winners using each member's record of loss experience over the current and prior three years. I'm pleased to announce that the Town of Fort Mill won first place for having the lowest experience modifier for our population group in South Carolina for the property and casualty insurance category, SMRF. And I'm happy to present this award to you, mayor and council, as well as a copy of the twenty-five-hundred-dollar check that we received. This truly is a team award because it symbolizes efforts by our, by our administrators, field managers, and most importantly, our frontline employees who place an emphasis on safety and minimizing accidents and claims over the previous twelve months.
All right.
I'll go eat dinner. I'm coming down there.
You got that? Put your hat on.
Look how gritty that is.
It's all over.
It's all good. Thank you. Thank you so much. So proud of every.
Not, not quite done yet.
Not done yet.
So I, I did want to, to introduce Becky Link, who is our human resources director, and Kathy Welch, who is our uh risk manager. So um, also last week, the association recognized recent graduates of the Risk Management Institute, which is a continuing education program for municipal staff who have risk management responsibilities in member communities. And our risk manager, Kathy here, was one of six graduates that was recognized at the meeting. So it's, it's all good news, and uh the, the check has already been deposited, so.
The check is in the mail. Ladies, thank you so much. I could not be more excited for where our staff is and is heading. It is just, does my heart a world of good to see you and to know the effort that you're putting forth. And Eric, guys, good things are happening. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. I think we had a.
Mayor, I'm going to follow up on that because uh we, we kind of did a tutorial on that one. Um, you know, we're just winning so many awards that uh. But um, last uh week, I had the privilege of going to Greenville and and uh meeting with the American Institute of Architects Greenville Chapter uh to receive an award on the Walter Elijah Park Amphitheater. Um, it's, that is our award, but uh we're, we're, we got another award anyway. So um, the design of the amphitheater took multiple years of, of staff and council time. Uh, it's certainly a wonderful asset to the town, but beyond that, uh, we were notified last month that uh it had won an award. So uh, again, I attended last week, didn't know what the award was. Um, but the uh, come to find out, it was the Community Choice Award for Best New Construction uh from the American Institute of Architects Greenville Chapter. And so basically, this was a selection uh from the public, from members of the public who voted from all projects considered by the American Institute of Architects uh for awards. Uh, so, you know, this is not a, an award uh from a bunch of architects saying i- it's the greatest thing ever. This is our community really supporting the things that we have done, and I think that's the best award that we could have possibly won. So very proud of what we've done. I don't have anything tangible to show like Eric did, but.
No check?
But, but, but that is. That is our award, so uh just really excited about that.
Outstanding. I mean, and it's honestly, you know, part of the, talk about Main Street and the downtown area being part of the core competency of the town and the heartbeat. Well, that is because we're seeing these events, and we saw the pictures earlier. Can't, can't wait to just get out there and see the lights all come back on again. That's just awesome. And everybody enjoys it, so that's great.
Thank you for the collective effort of everyone that made that amphitheater possible. Thank you. All right. Again, there are no old business items. I think now we have presentation number five, Visit York County with Andy Clinton.
Um, good evening. So uh, Andy Clinton with Visit York County, and appreciate you guys taking the, um, let me have the time to, to speak here. And just want to um, I'm relatively new to this uh position, been in for a little over a year now, so just want to um, uh, update you guys. Uh, it's always good to update uh county council, of course, but also all the municipalities as far as um what we're doing for the entire county. Um, first, I'm just going to go through a little bit as far as uh who we are, what we do, our structure. Um, so this is, this is our structure as far as uh it, it goes from York County Council and trickles down um through our uh Board of Commissioners. I'm thankful to have uh Brown Simpson uh here as well. He is actually uh, uh, my board chair. He's been on our board for uh going on eight years now, so uh. But very thankful and fortunate to have him as my board chair as I was transitioning through this position. He uh, I'll uh confirm that he is the goat. He's um, he, he's the best, so um. But uh, for our Board of Commissioners and as well as uh also representing our board commissioners, we actually have two staff from the Greenway as well. So um, great representation from Fort Mill. But from the board, that trickles down to Visit York County, our two funding models, we do have our hotel fee program as well as our municipality tourism taxes. That's accommodations taxes, um hospitality taxes from municipalities that do not have hotels. And then that trickles down to uh tourism, which is what we do. Um, so our mission, and we actually uh changed our mission um really in the past couple of years. It's always been a destination marketing organization that's to uh raise the profile and boost the economy um through tourism. But I think the last statement is what we've, we've changed, and I think it's important to me. I'm born and raised in this area. Um, but you know, while everything we're, we're doing is towards tourism, it's towards the visitor, it's important to know that these uh qualities and what we contribute to, whether it's events or our website, um, that it's for the uh life of our residents as well. So um, it's good that, you know, whether it's our website or our email blasts, our newsletters, social media pages, that it does hit the residents as well. Um, going through as far as our revenues, our budget, eighty-five percent of our budget comes from hotels, so that's where it is important um that we, whatever we're doing benefits the hotels. So that is important to us. Our top priorities, increase York County accommodations and hospitality tax. Obviously, that's important for us, but it's also important for um any accommodations tax committee where it's more than just us applying for that accommodations tax. It's also festivals and towns and um all sorts of events. So we want to increase the accommodations tax for, you know, other, other events and the Greenway. So we want to increase the accommodations tax for, you know, other, other events and the Greenway and Strawberry Festival, um, to utilize that as well. Market all of York County as a tourism destination. That's important for us that, um, we're, uh, marketing the entire county. Some, support York County businesses and then enhance the experience and support. So like I said, to our core is, is the hotels, eighty-five percent of our budget. So I did wanna just show you guys a quick kinda graph as far as from COVID and kinda twenty-twenty. You can see that red line where, where it did dip to, uh, where we currently are. So we're, we're in a good place as far as, um, hotels and from occupancy levels. And this is where we always want to see where can we, where can we improve. What's also increased is, is the average daily rate, which is, which is great that we're getting back to, um, a hundred dollars, which is, which is great for us. I did wanna do a quick recap as far as events that have taken place in Fort Mill. It's important for us to reach the entire county. Um, I'll touch on a couple of these. So, uh, Rock the Winds, there is, uh, esports, so the sport of video games is, is a thing. So we are actually, um, we partnered with Winthrop University and their esports team to have an event, uh, out at Carolins. We also had the Rivals Football Camp. If you are familiar with rivals.com, they're the largest football recruiting site in the country. So we actually host their, uh, Southeast Regional at Nation Ford. I'm partnered with Nation Ford for several years now. The NCAAU National Championships, that was out at Com, uh, Comporium Athletic Park, um, as well as the Battle Football. Those are both youth football events. Um, Phenom Hoops is a club basketball event that we utilized all three high schools, uh, in Fort Mill. So you had influx of close, you know, a hundred and fifty teams, uh, over the summer. And then, uh, the Nike Dirt Tour, that is actually, uh, youth mountain biking that takes, uh, place out at the Greenway. So, um, very excited to have those events in Fort Mill. This touches on the, uh, youth football event that we actually had at, uh, Comporium Athletic Park. That was, uh, over sixty teams, um, eighty percent of them were, uh, out of town and stayed overnight. That's an impact of three million dollars and you can see how a lot of the teams went to Carolins. They're eating in restaurants in Fort Mill, so it was a big boost to, um, to our economy. Uh, also wanna touch on, on the marketing and this is, uh, this is important to me. So the Yoko Buzz, that is, if you go on our website, you'll, you can, uh, click on where you can put in your email and you can receive the Yoko Buzz. And, uh, it is that, that massive email that it goes out to fifteen thousand people. And typically, when it goes to that many people, you're looking at a open rate of three percent, five percent, seven percent if you're, if you're good. But it does have a, uh, open rate of fifty-five percent. So and it goes over, um, events going on, um, each weekend. So we continue to enhance that, um, to make sure that we do highlight all the events in the area. You can also see our website. We've take, had a strong kinda priority into our website as far as how do we, how do we reach the visitor? How do we reach the local community? We don't want our website to stay stagnant. So whether that's videography, some of the imagery and just blogs, content, you know, ten things to do under ten dollars. Where to hike, where to pick strawberries. Um, so you can see, this is what's very impressive. We'd always strive to have, you know, half a million, um, page views. And you can see from twenty-twenty-two, we're not even done with twenty-twenty-three yet. We're at one point six million. Hundred and twelve percent increase from last calendar year, so, um, crazy. But it's the, you know, it's the content and it's what, you know, Chakana does, you know, I mean, if, when we have those great events and we can, um, enhance them on our websites, it's great, so. Now getting into some of our marketing, uh, social media, paid media, some of the partnerships that we're in. We've also, whether that's Instagram, Facebook, um, digital advertising, uh, utilizing influencers, blogs, figuring out how, how the best to reach, um, reach people and our engagement's done very well. It's important that we, we do highlight local, local restaurants, local breweries, attractions, things to do in the area. So, um, we continue to, to make strides, uh, in that area. Some of our key initiatives, we do have our destination guide. Uh, we, uh, print out thirty thousand and we give out thirty thousand, uh, uh, every year. It's, uh, it's, it's a great piece of information. Um, we do also have our Yoko Taste Trail that we've done for several years now. In the past two years, we actually switched it to a similar, a Restaurant Week style. We had a year-long, um, and we felt it was best served as far as a week-long Restaurant Week. And, um, we continue, you know, our website views go, uh, go up. Um, everything's kinda increased as far as with that trail. Um, and we do feature several Fort Mill restaurants, um, as well as for our Yoko Brew Trail, another initiative that we've had for several years now. And it's great and we're actually tweaking a few things to, uh, continue to keep, uh, the Yoko Brew Trail thriving, but have several, um, Fort Mill breweries a part of that as well. And then last, uh, this was an extra initiative that we, um, that we added, uh, where we're actually going to add two new digital kiosks, one in downtown Rock Hill and then one in downtown Fort Mill. Believe you guys maybe saw this. This was on your docket maybe a couple months ago, um, where it was approved. And I'm actually, uh, working with Penelope to get this, uh, get this project going and make sure we do it right. I'm hoping that it will be, uh, this coming spring where we'll, we'll see it out there. But, uh, the kiosk that we put in, um, I'm guessing it was ten-plus years ago. It needs some work and this is exactly what we're looking for, which you guys are looking for. And it's great how once again, we're using accommoda- accommodations tax that is made for the visitor. So yes, the visitor can use this, but also the local resident can use this as well as far as, they'll, we'll be able to update it and it will go straight to our website as far as, you know, events going on each weekend, restaurants, uh, things of that nature. So very excited about this. And, uh, that's it for me, but, um, you guys can, uh, feel free to email me if you have any questions, um, but thank you. Thank you again for having me.
You've done a great job, Andy, to only have been there a year and see the increases in the amount of people that are actually connecting to the information. So much better than the days when we just had the little book, so. Yes, I remember when, but thank you for everything that you do for our area.
Be creative and, uh, evolve, so.
We're happy to see you here, you know. It's kinda nice to hear from you.
We often talk about metrics around here. The fact that you have metrics lets us see how it is evolving rather than just taking your word for it. To be able to see you've got a fifty-five percent opening rate, that, that's unheard of, so that's a great job. And to be able to see the growth, so thank you for capturing that information so that it gives us kind of that starting point where we wanna go to grow.
Very proud. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, we've exhausted every, um, category with the exception of information discussion. There are no items and no executive session this evening. Mr. Hudgens, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
I do and I brought it up and I'll be a little redundant again, but I can't stress it enough, the, the value to me of intelligent dialogue. Uh, I stress that in the office place. It really facilitates great things when you are able to, to sit in front of each other and kinda put the personal side of it and get to business and, and talk intelligently. Hey, I've done my homework and things like that. That's, that's got so much value to it. And I know we do a lot of homework here, you know, the things that we get, the supporting materials and things and we read over them, not like before the meeting starts. It's something we all take seriously and, and go walk properties and look and study things. So that to me is, that, you know, I've got a sign up at my office and we moved in that place about eleven years ago and I stuck a cheap sign on the door in our production area and I said, "Communication, word of the day every day." You know, and it's just critically important. It really, really is, so, again, thank you for everybody that's here. You took the time to come here and you didn't stay home and hide behind a keyboard or social media or Twitter or whatever. I don't do that, but whatever it is, that it's a good place for people to rant and, uh, it's easy to do. There's no accountability there. So I appreciate the time that people have taken to, to be here and talk. But anyway, um, I would like to take the first opportunity to congratulate those who were elected again. Mr. Moody and Mr. Helms and Ms. Savage and, uh, Ms. Cook. I appreciate that. Um, fortunate.
It was a hard-fall battle.
What's that?
Mine was a hard-fall battle.
Here it was. But no, it's, it was neat. It was, I'm excited to see what we can do over the next few years.
And, uh, I think there's some things that have been done already and just excited to see the, there's a lot of potential here. And I believe in every one of you. I really do. So it's been an honor to, to serve that and look forward to more. Disappointed in the, the voting turnout. I guess that's something that's just, it baffles me. I, I don't understand it. But news flash, next year, cause I had people on the, in my neighborhood Facebook site, when's the election? When is it? It's November the seventh, next year, twenty-twenty-four, so put it on your calendar to, to go vote. I mean, it's a, it's a privilege to be able to do. You got a lot of people that have fought for that right and our independence and, and our democracy to be able to do that. And I think it's taken for granted sometime. I really do, but I just can't stress how important it is to show up, you know. For sure. Really appreciate that, so, that's my thing.
Mr. Garrison?
Add on to everything that, uh, Mr. Hudgens said, uh, our Veterans Day, um, celebration. It was cold, it was wet, but there was a great crowd out there. I see a lot of the same faces in this crowd that were out there on Saturday. It was greatly appreciated. Um, I had the honor of saying the, the, uh, the prayer. My son, who, uh, played taps for it and it was, he killed it. Listen, I tell you, he killed it. It was amazing. Uh, we had, uh, Congressman Ralph Norman, we had Lieutenant Colonel Jonathan Baker, uh, give the speech, Mayor as well. And, um, it was, it was a great event and I just, uh, I love the events that we have with a town like that. Everybody might notice that my beard's a little bit thicker. Uh, it's No Shave November. Some of us don't have to worry about doing the heads and everything. Now listen now, so the, the, so the concept, there's actually noshave.org. The, the goal of No Shave November is to grow awareness for, by embracing our hair, which many case, uh, cancer patients, patients lose and letting it grow wild and free. Donate the money you typically spend on shaving and grooming to educate about cancer prevention, save lives and aid those fighting the battle. So November, it's a good excuse not to shave or cut your hair or anything else, so look into it for next year, please. I'm working on that. And, uh, last thing I have is remember, tomorrow needs you, so thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Sure. So, um, I wanna tag on a little bit different way on the Veterans Event. While it was a moving event, um, a great, the people that were there were just fantastic to see. Those that come time and time again, but to see some of the younger generations starting to come. But what I sat there thinking of, um, is the weather that was there while it was cold and rainy. I, I think about our service people all over the world for many, many years who sit in ditches in the cold and rain and the mud. And they do that because so many of them, as we were talking about at that event, volunteered to serve our country and to protect us. They weren't drafted. They did it on their own. They went and signed that piece of paper and volunteered to be in the conditions they were in. So I don't wanna take that lightly. I was also very honored that, um, my chair happened to be placed over my grandfather's brick. At Veterans Park, you can get a brick, um, that you can have with whoever you want to honor and their service time that was there. And I, I don't believe in fate, I believe in faith. And God put me in that chair for a reason. And it was so that it could touch me. And your son playing taps, the, um, I'll never forget when my grandfather passed and at his graveside service hearing that. He was a World War II veteran and I loved telling his story, so that meant a lot. Also wanted to say, um, in the election, uh, I want to commend Lindsay Kirby for her effort in running out there and putting herself out there. A lot of people do hide behind social media or behind the computer and don't put theirself out there and take that risk. All of us have taken that risk of trying to run out there to be able to make a difference in our community. And, um, we all do it. We may do it in different ways, even on council, we do it in different ways. But our coun- council's chemistry is something that I know a lot of times you guys don't see out in the public because so much of what we're doing is just saying yay and nay. But the chemistry of this council makes things work so much faster. We worked on a project this afternoon that in the past would have taken weeks to get done. And we were able to knock it out in a couple hours. And it's just a matter of this chemistry here is gonna make a difference much faster than what you're used to seeing out there. So know that we'll continue working to uphold what, um, you have elected us to do. Also wanted to touch a little bit on what Brown mentioned. A lot of what I heard during the election was that people just didn't know where to go get information. And we have two very good local resources for news in this community. WRHI does a fantastic job of communicating topics that are going on in the community. Every morning, they've got Palmetto Mornings and Lucas is always talking, Lucas McBaden is always talking about current government things, decisions that are made at government levels or volunteer organizations. Listen in. A lot of their programs are recorded. Man and Kimmel does a straight talk every day and I learned, every time I turned that radio station on, I learned something I didn't know about. And I think, you know, we get bombarded with information here and there's just so much there. But also CN2 News, um, CN2 is also recorded. So feel free, when you're driving down the road, Glenn, when you're heading to Georgia, listen to those stations, that pre-recorded information. Cause there's a lot of information that I get and I do the same thing. When I'm driving up to Davidson, I'll play back some of that information so I can learn. So that information's out there. It's harder and harder to go find it, but I'm giving you two very easy places to find it. And then also lastly, just wanted to say safety this time. With the time change, it's getting dark a whole lot earlier. We're all gonna be out with decorations and everything that's going on. I think one of the best things we did was moving the tree lighting to Walter Elijah as well as a couple other events that we have. And the number one reason that this council is sits up here is to improve safety for our community. And that event and that place is perfect for us, so just keeping aware, safety, um, pedestrian traffic is always gonna be a concern for us. But just be mindful of those walking around while it's dark.
Wonderful. Councilman Helms?
Sorry I missed the veterans. I had, uh, got called in to work, but, uh, I've always tried to be there because I am a veteran. Just wanna continue to commend staff on the hard work they're doing and, uh, glad to be back.
Glad you are back. Councilman Moody?
Uh, just wanna thank everybody that voted last week. If you vote in a city election, kudos to you because I believe town council politics can have the greatest level of impact on where you live. I've told this to many people that I would take these six people I served with against anybody else in the state of South Carolina. I missed the Veterans Day ceremony this year. I wanna first thank my grandfather Norman Walker that served in World War II and my father Harold Moody that served in Vietnam. But, um, we buried a parent on Saturday. My wife's mom passed away. And, uh, to Lisa's point about the chemistry we have on Friday night, a Friday night where any of these people could have been out to dinner, they were at Funeral Home, standing in line consoling my wife and me and my family. And I, I truly mean that. Thank you all for your service and for your friendship. Words will never be able to describe it, but I thank you. Uh, and that's all I have.
Councilman Wolf?
Well, Mr. Hudgens stole all my bullet items.
Of course he did.
So, uh, but I do thank y'all for participating tonight. Thank y'all for your concerns and being involved in your community. This is your community too, just like it's our community. And that's what we need volunteers. We need people that care and will put blood, sweat and tears into it. Also wanna thank Brown for all he does. That golden voice is not all he does. He also does a great job with the rec groups and, uh, coordinating, working with the parade and a lot of stuff. So you're a big asset to the town, uh, and thank you for the hat. I'll, every time I look at it, I'll think of you. Also like to congratulate all of my peers on the, uh, successful campaign and reelection. I think, uh, we as this council have made great progress on s- significant, uh, uh, items the past couple of years. And I'm glad y'all are gonna be here to help us get it across the finish line, so look forward to that. It's an exciting time of year, you know, Thanksgiving is just around the corner and the staff's real busy putting out. We, we talked about decorations. Fall is a great time to reflect on the previous year and all the many blessings. So thanks to Thanksgiving, so giving thanks. As part of that, I really appreciate whoever coordinated the Fort Mill One-Fifty community outreach. I would applaud anybody to get involved, make donations. Not, there's obviously a lot of food banks that are, have things going on for Thanksgiving. You know, there's just, you have to keep in mind, there's a lot of people in, in need. And, you know, whatever small things we can do to help give back to our community helps make it the special place that it is. So get involved, stay involved.
So get involved, stay involved, you know, you know, we're all in this together.
Okay, on a more mundane note, and yes, I'll get emotional after this, guys, don't blow the leaves out in the street, blow them next to the curb. When leaves get wet, they get slippery, and someone on a bike or a motorcycle, or even a lightweight car doing 100 miles an hour on Spratt Street, might have an accident. So please pay attention to when the leaf truck comes in your neighborhood and do what's fair to everybody else traveling that street. Please, keep those drains clean. It doesn't take a bit of time. I do two of mine in my neighborhood, just go get stuff out of it. Make sure we keep as safe as possible for each other. So on the emotional part, I do think it's very sad that so few people think their vote is important. I do, because many people died so that people like you and I had the opportunity to vote. And for those of us that sit up here, you know, I get asked the question all the time, why would you do that? Why, why do you put yourself out there like that? It matters. It matters. This is our community too. Many of us grew up here, we love it here, and we want so much to do the work to keep it the good place that it is. So for this Thanksgiving, to Lisa Chris's point, you know, this council's different. You don't see us up here arguing with each other. It isn't because we don't disagree, we do. We disagree more than you think. But we've made it a point to show respect for one another and to keep the sanctity of our work, the sanctity of our work. We care about each other, we, we care about our employees. Thank you for giving us calls when an employee's sick or, in, in a bad way. We do, and, and to go to a funeral where we have a teammate that's hurting or someone that, that's had surgery, or, we care about each other. And I wish the rest of the world did. I do. I wish they did, because I think they'd be a lot happier and we'd get a lot more done. So for this Thanksgiving, I will be giving thanks for my teammates, my peers, our employees. You do a fabulous job, and for all of you that support us and give us the chance to serve. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?